Ready?
I'm ready. Okay, calling the Moore County Commissioners' order and we'll start with the President's allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first time in business with the public comment. The way a public comment works, I'll just go through the rules real quick. Each person, this is the time for you to talk, make comments to the board commissioners. This isn't a debating time, it's not a give and take. Those are, those are items that are on the agenda. People in the audience have three minutes to make a comment and we ask that you keep it civil. We'll start with the people in the room and then we'll move on to Zoom. Is there anyone who doesn't want to? Just, just state your name and if you're affiliated with the group, just do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Sue Oliver. I live in North Moro County, 74442 Froberg Lane. I wanted to come this morning because I'm greatly concerned about a lot of things that are happening, both on the national and the local. Some of you might have seen me a couple of weeks ago at Representative Benson's town hall. The part of that video that went viral did not include the first part where I expressed my great concern over what's going on at the local level in terms of frankly, our government's failure to do their most basic functions. At that point, I mentioned the water issue. I have been silent in this county for a long time. I have decided in the recent months to become visible because I know there are a lot more people like me out here. My concern this morning, a couple of things I wanted to address. One, I am not a paid actor. Commissioner Benson is trying to go around saying people in the town all were paid actors. Look at their practice presentation. I've been a public speaker my entire life since I was 15. Yes, you practice, you prepare to be effective. I'm not at all effective this morning because my whole family conspired to make me late this morning, from the husband to the dog to the grandkid. But I'm here and I'm trying to... What I wanted to bring up today is I went to the meeting of the Columbia Development Authority last week. I am horrified about what is happening on that board. We have a representative at this board, on this commission, who is not here today. I don't know if Mr. Winholz is participating electronically today. I sat and watched five members of the Columbia Development Board, only one of which was actually advocating for the public. The other ones all seemed to be trying to, let's deflect all this issue and put it off and we don't want to talk about it. And my representative, the Moro County Commissioner, sat there in utter silence the entire meeting. And I was confused. This is a huge financial hit if the federal funding for that grant gets pulled. And, and all I hear is silence. This is, I am frustrated with, we elect you to represent us and to go from my congressional representative basically standing there and saying, "I'm powerless, I'm just as powerless as you, I cannot do anything", to a local meeting where again, I hear nothing. There's a lot going on there. I am here to defend my own reputation. I am not a paid actor. I am right now an angry citizen who has decided to stick my head up in my local space. I did not, when I resigned from the Planning Commission in 2019, I didn't make a scene about that. But your county council was there and he heard that conversation when I walked out there. That was when I gave up. I cannot affect each in this county. Okay, so I'm back. I am asking you, when I looked at this agenda for this meeting, there are two things I do not see on the agenda that I would like to request. Okay, I am. I'm going to request, one, that you have a discussion about what's going on in the Columbia Development Authority. What is our county's position on this? What are we doing? And two, I see a lot of stuff back there about Les Sykes being some sort of reporter that has a mission. He does not. I have worked with that man since the 90s. He was one of the most, the best reporter the Oregonian had. He is honorable and you can trust what he says and what he wrote. There needs to be things done and nothing is fleeting. One other thing, Mr. Commissioner? We have, we have a school bond, one last thing. We also have a school bond coming up. I'd like to know how the county stands on that and again, I see nothing on the agenda. So I'm hoping that a commissioner report later, that we will hear from Commissioner Winholz and I would like to hear what you're doing to help support the school bond. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. We do. Is there anyone else in the room? Yes, John.
Thank you, Chair Sykes. My name is John Murray. I'm a Port of Moro Commissioner and I'm here to comment on two things now, not just one. One, the first one has to do with, I appreciate, or I wanted to report that the annexation request from Boardman Fire was discussed at the recent Port of Moro Commission meeting. Besides a vote, a unanimous vote, the commission will to ask the CDA to allow the future landowner to make that request should the, should it have come up. That was voted on unanimously and it was taken to the CDA Board meeting where they did also vote unanimously to rescind the request for annexation from Boardman Fire, I think effective today and I think you have that letter. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the discussion on how annexation happens because there is some confusion, fusion, or there's two pathways, or we think there's two pathways. So I appreciate the discussion. I will have to go, but I will listen to it remotely, so. There was consensus, honestly, at the Port Commission meeting and I have authority from the chair to speak to this issue. I'm not saying opinion, I'm saying what happened at the meeting. There was no vote, but there was consensus of the commissioners prior to the vote that they would like to see Irrigan Fire be assigned that taxing area of the CDA to help support Bill and build their program going into the future. They currently don't have industrial ground. $2 billion plus for Boardman Fire and the Boardman area is a lot of taxation ability. It'd be nice if Irrigan Fire had something as the CDA will continue to build. The second topic I was going to mention in reference to our first speaker, just a brief update. The Port Commission asked, and I think it was reported at the CDA Board meeting, that the Port Commission would request an extension of the 10-day deadline for the, for withdrawal from the grant process by the Port of Moro. That was granted to us for 15 days. In that 15 days, we do have staff going to Boardman, excuse me, going to Washington DC. They are already going to Washington DC. They will be meeting with BRAC and OLDDCC. So we hope to get some information from that. The Port of Moro, I do not believe, although this is not a vote and it hasn't been discussed, I suspect they will not wish to be the fiscal agent for the CDA. But we do wish to continue funding from OLDDCC if at all possible to support the project, so. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the room that has a public motion to make a comment? Is there anyone on Zoom that wants to comment? Please raise your hand. Can you see anybody? Not?
I do.
Okay. We will, that'll be, we'll close the public comment. And next, you know, the consideration on the agenda. And all into do that.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
One second. Move the second. Any further discussion?
Sorry, one, one second. It's the last, over the weekend, we added the artificial intelligence policy discussion. And since that was the last item added, it ended up at the bottom of the agenda. Do we just move that up to follow the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement?
Since Lindsay's doing both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Acceptable.
That's acceptable.
All favor.
Aye.
Will that change? All of those, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next item will be our department reports and we'll start with the clerks. What are they, Bobby? You there online, Bobby?
Let's see here.
Okay. Then our private works, not to report, Eric. Eric's in, let's go.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I brought Rory, Deputy Director, with me. No particular reason except he's good looking. Okay, I want to say I apologize for the lack of detail in this monthly report. It's been extra busy. There's no lack of work that's been going on. As far as the road crew, February, you know, we had some snow, we did some plowing. It was very, not much of a storm, but a storm nonetheless. And we, we were able to work through that with minimal issues on plowing and sanding. Since then, while roads were thawing out, you know, most people know that, that after a storm like that and the thaw starts, it's hard to get on gravel roads. We spend that time burning weeds, cleaning ditches, anything that we can do while we're waiting for thaw to come out. We did get some paco patching done this month. Always doing the signs. I reported on the sign campaign that we've been working on and that, that continues. And as I mentioned, the culvert repair replacement and continue to work on cattle guards. There, you'll, you'll hear about culvert work a lot. We're really trying to catch up. There's a lot of culverts out there that are just plugged and need repair or replacement. And as, as a lot of you know as well too, equipment has gotten so much bigger. The roads have been widened over the years and the culverts haven't. So we're putting extensions out there, a lot, a lot of extensions out there. And it's sent in, in February as well, that we did experience dry, drying enough to where we did get the blade operators out, which was last week, the end of the week. And they are all out now hitting, hitting the gravel roads, adding rock and blading. Other significant item is, you know, we're, we're always improving or not, working the right away permits and approaches. Getting applications, I should say. In this particular month, there's been a lot. Staff has worked hard, Sandy and, pardon me, Kirsty and Rose and I and Rory have been putting a lot of time in this particular month with, with approaches and different right away permits. Most significant is the B2H project. I think we might have went through 80 of them. As far as the, nothing really significant at the airport, weeds, I mean, Cory's out spraying, he's getting some good spray days and, and that's great. I'm getting a lot, a lot of miles done in the last four days, especially with the low wind. So he's out. Did get a concern about Boardman up north on the height of the weeds. We typically go in to the Irrigan Boardman area in April, May. After some of the growth gets going and mow, mow that down, we do less spraying just because of the, the, the water and the irrigation ditches up there. So if you, if you get a call or hear anything, our plan is April, May to get up there and start mowing, which is consistent with what we usually do. And then solid waste, you know, I've reported that the scale up north is in, should be operational in a few weeks. Still here time on the pads and Rory is actually handling those projects. And the south transfer scale is, is, is begun. They're, they're in there working right now. So that's all on track and on schedule. That's the end of my report. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll keep after it.
All right. Actually, there's a good looking guy.
You bet.
All right, yes, the report is, there's a report, I think we have.
Yeah, that was written.
Okay, and the next up is our accounts payable. That's, that's speaking also. There are consent agenda. Do you want to pull either one of those out?
Oh, fine.
Well, I've registered a motion to approve the consent.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. And the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, motion carried. Okay, now this is into our business items. Our first item is amendment to contract, you know, AD services attached to the circuit. It's meant into a car.
Chair, I might ask to have that moved down just a little bit. I thought our business and department reports and such would take a little bit longer. And Kelly was going to join us about 45, so I apologize. But if we could have it moved down a little bit, they're just, but I'm holding for right now.
Okay. All right, so next up, we'll move on to the motion to approve recycling haulers as all providers, Recycling Modernization Act, consideration Sandy and Rosemary.
In the middle of the transition with my old administrative manager role and now my new procurement, I have this kind of hanging in the winds. I didn't want to leave Rose Kyle just all hanging, so I thought I'll present it and pass her the garbage queen hat. Back last year, the state passed a modern, Recycling Modernization Act, the RMA. I don't know if any of you had a chance to look into it. I have some, just kind of a background, kind of a leaflet, just kind of helps you understand what's happening. What's happening is we're going to be, not me, but the state is going to be basically getting a hold of all our, I'll get one to Jeff. All our producers of plastic, all our makers of plastic. And so we're gonna, they are going to be charging a fee, just basically how the paint program went and everything else. So there's going to be some funds available for counties and entities to request funding for receiving this recyclable material. Right now, we don't have the funds to haul it. We don't have access or any, any way of getting this. But we do like want to collect it and get it disposed of properly. So what this is, the motion to approve the recycling haulers, is our hauler, we have Kevin Miracle on. And I, I don't know if we were going to get Ryan Miller, but I don't see Lori Gordon with DQ on here. I don't see the other ones either, but if Kevin wants to kind of speak a little bit, that would be great if he's available. He's at the top there. But what this does, it's the county authorizing the haulers, our two franchise. We have a franchise on the south end here, which is Miller and Sons. And the north end is Waste Management Sanitary Disposal. So this gives authorization for them to get access to funding to help them get recycling bins, maybe trucks, maybe extra people. There's a certain amount of money that each county and each region can get. But this is just authorizing them to get the funding from the pro counts instead of having the county be a passer. So I don't think Kevin, what's the deal with that? Would, the county still gets their funding and still available and I will work with Rose on that. So I think it should be a good, I'm sorry, Kevin's not on there. Well, he's on there, but he's not, not paying attention.
I've got a question. So if, if we fully authorize both of these businesses, so this would be, they would be getting money that basically we as the county said, hey, state, these are the people that should be getting this money? Or is this money that we would be getting otherwise?
This is, we wouldn't be able to, yeah, yeah. It's for haulers and it's not necessarily the entity whose, you know, we get our own funding, they have their own funding. We are just saying, yeah, let them go through them. Otherwise, they invoice us and we're going to have to figure out how to get that through the state. And I don't think I want to do that. Or Rose wants to do that, or Kevin wants to do that. But we get our own funding, so it's not shortening us any.
Okay.
If that's.
Yes, that answers my question. Thank you.
It's so they can turn around and invoice if they buy containers. Those containers are $15,000 now. So if they buy their, their recycling containers, they can go to the state, get reimbursed for that.
Kevin has his hand raised.
Ah, Kevin, can you do a little speaking please? Thank you.
He's texting me and saying he can't go there.
Oh, Kevin Miracle with sanitary disposal waste connections.
Hello, can everybody hear me? Everybody hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. I'm clicking away on my mute button thinking I was doing something wrong and I think I blew up Sandy and Eric's phone going, hey, I'm on mute. So yeah, basically what Sandy said's correct, it's basically you guys would just authorize us to get the money that would, we would purchase trucks and, and containers. The UGB outside of Boardman, so Board, so Hermiston City, Humantilla and Boardman are all going to be required to have a curbside recycling program. And the UGB or the UGA, what the urban growth area, urban growth boundary, is going to fall under the, the Moro County piece, just like the two pieces in Humantilla and Hermiston fall under Humantilla County. So basically what it is, is an authorization form saying that you guys will allow us to work with the CAA and we negotiate with them and then we take the money that they give us through the state and we purchase the trucks and equipment. And also, I believe that there's some funding in there for recycle when it, you know, like if it's contaminated, so an outreach to the public. And then with what Moro County has going with the north and south transfer stations that, and I think Sandy's on board with this, but I think that you guys should, that, that piece should still, a little bit of that piece should still be in, in Moro County's hands, so you can purchase, yeah, purchase some stuff for the transfer station in order to be compliant with the new, new law.
Yes, we do. We have all that.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah. And one, one last thing. We're working through our, our performer to get out how much it's going to cost for this added piece to, it's just the few customers in the UGB outside of Boardman. So I'll also get in, I'll get in front of everybody when the time comes, that work. Right now, we're still working through the, the process with the CAA. We probably won't even, I don't even think we'll probably order trucks until maybe November of this year. And it's going to take, you know, I mean, we're, we're a year, year and a half out on even getting equipment, so. I know there's always the hope that 2026 is going to be, you know, the drop dead date for, for the trucks, but I, I don't see that coming. But I'll stay, I'll stay in communication with everybody, so everybody knows what's going on.
It's a, it's, it's an exciting program and I like to see that. For years, I've always wanted plastic to be recycled and I wanted access to get these. I know, I know we're rural, I know it's hard to get this stuff out, but I like to see this coming in. I know it may increase our goods prices because they're going to have to put that, whatever their tax is on to, to make all this money available for everybody. But I think it's a good positive move and I'm going to officially pass my garbage crown, my garbage queen hat to Rose. And I wish Rose all the luck. I'm still there, available for phone calls and help, but I think we're heading in the right direction here.
And the, the last thing that I, and I'm done talking after this. You would still count me, Hermiston, Boardman, Echo. I'm still working with Stanfield and I still have to get with Aaron and Irrigan, but they have all signed the authorization form allowing the, the money to flow through us, so.
Yeah. And I, I want to say the reason Boardman is in that range because they're in a population of 4,000 or more. So they get a little bit bigger responsibilities and that's where the county has to take them under their wing and help them and get them guided. That's it?
Any other questions to come in, or Sandy?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
Do you see the suggested motion now? Yes?
Yes, I was just going to see.
Kind of lengthy.
Did you make that motion?
I will, I will make that motion. Okay.
Did you read it so?
I move to authorize the county chair to sign a funding authorization form allowing two recycling haulers to receive Producer Responsibility Organization, PRO, funding. This supports cooperation, helps cover eligible costs and advances the county's efforts to comply with the state's Recycling Modernization Act.
All right, second. Yeah, it's giving you a second to go to the discussion.
Aye.
Oh, motion carried.
Thank you. Very nice job.
Thank you.
Stuff with the C, I think Andy here, this year 26. Energy Union Commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. I have three items for you today and thank you to Valerie for organizing those all together. Make efficient use of our time. Great. Okay, our first item is the classification review for the next fiscal year budget. Per the classification policy, only the BOC may authorize the addition of any new positions based on the recommendation of the Personnel Review Committee, consists of the county administrator, the finance director and the HR director. We received nine new FTE requests this year and we narrowed them down to the following recommendations. So first is the weed control applicator, the second is the janitor, third is an HR assistant and fourth is a DA legal assistant. So I've included the key points on each position in the packet and I'll go through those if you'd like me to. So out of the recommended positions, the weed control applicator, it's a transition to, from a part-time seasonal position to a full-time regular role to support with vegetation management. The department currently has 25,492 budgeted for their seasonal position and it would require an additional $70,901 to fund the full-time role. And I think that you guys are very well aware of the demands for contract spraying, especially with the energy projects coming into the county. So that was the main justification of that position. Is Cory here? You guys want to add? It's a great day. All right, the second one is for a janitor. It's an addition, so the county currently has one full-time janitor to cover all county facilities. So this is a request for an additional full-time janitor. The total projected overhead is $122,702, which includes the initial vehicle purchase of about $47,000. The, with only one janitor, the department has communicated that it has challenges with staffing if that employee, you know, goes on vacation or gets sick or has anything else going on at the county facility, maintenance of the cleaning schedule just kind of gets put on hold for the time being. So, and then, you know, of course, we are planning on building some more county facilities, so this would help with that coverage. The HR assistant, I did recuse myself from the decision-making process for this request. Just wanted to put that on record. It's a .8 FTE request, which is 32 hours a week. The total projected overhead is 68,175. The justification was we have about 160 staff members with about 170 positions that are budgeted for. The current HR staffing ratio is below the typical benchmark. And our HR function also includes payroll. And this role would help. Um, and this role would help strengthen internal support among um, countywide departments. And the last one that's being uh, recommended to the board is the D A legal assistant. So uh, the D A had actually requested uh, four uh, full-time positions. There was three. Um, office assistants and one uh, D A office investigator. We uh, had many discussions with the D A and um, some of his staff. And we determined that priority would be actually recommending a legal assistant um, to help with the caseload entering and police reports. Um, and all of the administrative support that is needed, that helps alleviate some of that work from the D A and the deputy D A as well. Um, and the total projected overhead for that position is a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and twenty-two. Did you wanna add anything?
Yes, definitely, when we had conversations, we had many conversations, and actually changed on my part some too. Um, there was, I was very well set, as I've been for a long time, on D A Office Investigator, I think that was an important role. And we had a lot of conversations, some concerns of not, issues raised, like, oh gosh, how's that overwork with the sheriff's office? You know, it's a law enforcement person, I think it's a beneficial spot, and I was pretty well set, saying, no, I think this is the one I want, or anything else. And I was pretty adamant about that for quite a ways with them. Talked to Matt, Lindsay some more, then also my office staff, and kinda seeing the workload, you know, entering the cases, because even though. Technology is good, it actually causes a lot more work on the county side by data entry, like before you usually get a police report, read it. Type it up, send it in, you're not doing like data entry into your system, you know, scanning on it, printing things. And after sit talking to, let's say, Office Manager Dionne Six, Advocate Julia Finch. And realizing the workload they're doing, I'm like, yeah, uh, that we probably do need someone more in the office to assist more than the investigation aspect. It's probably this position is more important, so I ended up agreeing with um, Matt and Lindsay and my office staff, saying, yeah, this is the better spot. This position, it's more, it's more important than the other ones for what I'm asking for, so. I definitely appreciate the conversations that um, it wasn't just one time, they reached out a couple times, so I definitely appreciate that.
Any questions on those that are recommended before I move on?
What's your deadline for getting it, you know, included in the budget? What's your deadline for us approving it?
Yeah, I was hoping for consideration today, but yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I would, I wanted, I would like to have the full board here, but if it doesn't fit your schedule.
It's, yeah.
Your timeline for the budget either. I, and I'm not opposed to. You know, it's, it's something that's uh, yeah. Staffing and so, so I'd like to have him here, but it's not, you know.
If you weren't the postpartum, we can, can adjust and work around that.
Well, we do have a form, so if we are in agreement for it, then that is enough to do it, so.
Well. I make a motion to table this to my team. I wish you guys relax for a second.
Uh, I move that we approve the recommended. Recommended. What's the right word?
Um, recommend, recommended classification request for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
I knew that we approved the classification review. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
I'll second. The moves in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Well, the next step would be.
So um, today we are presenting uh, the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight uh, collective bargaining agreement for the. Morrow County General Employees, which are represented by AFSME Local uh, two four seven nine Sublocal zero zero two. Um, for your consideration and approval. Um, negotiations began in May of twenty twenty-four. Um, so after several months of discussion, um, a tentative agreement was reached. Um, between uh, the county and the association on February twenty-fifth of um, this year. And uh, the union has voted to ratify the contract, uh, and the county's management team would like to recommend approval. Um, if I could, just, you know, uh, this process did take um, nearly ten months. Um, and it had extensive discussions. Um, but I think, you know, in the end, we aligned um, priorities and were able to come to a mutual agreement. Um, so just wanted to um, thank both parties for that and all the time spent. Getting to that uh, potential agreement.
Okay, so you have any questions?
Uh, no, I'm glad that we've finally gotten to this point.
Yeah, um, just another note, sorry, I forgot uh, that what's in the packet is just the. Um, it's not the complete finalized agreement, it's um, the red line version. So as soon as um, we get that done, there won't be any substantial changes, it's just, you know, going through one more time, looking at. Uh, spelling errors or anything like that, um, then we would route it to the union first for signature and then bring it back. Um, at a later. So I'm asking for you to ratify it today, but sign it at a later date.
There'd be no substantive.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well, we have the suggestion.
Yeah, I move that we ratify the collective bargaining agreement between Marl County and the Marl County General Employees Local two four seven nine. Dash zero zero two.
You're getting all the work today, aren't you? Okay, our last item was Lindsay was the artificial intelligence policy discussion. And I asked her to be on here, well, Lindsay approached me and talked about A I that did another meeting. That she had a policy, I don't really, myself, I don't really wanna approve it or. Uh, what I would like the board to do is to think about, and the staff too. What, what A I is going to be used in the county, I've been using it for about two years since Chad G P first came out. And I find it very useful. And I would hope that the county would sit down and talk staff and say, okay. What, what can be used, what can we use it for? And then kinda write the policy to make sure that, uh, and I'm not sure where you got the policy. Uh, and I'm, I'm kinda unclear why it goes to H R, but that's okay. Um, and then maybe make sure if we find. A I that's being used by other counties effectively, and we accept it, then kinda write the policy. That will allow us to do that, you know, as long as, we don't wanna break any laws or go against the H R rules or anything like that, you know. That's kinda what I, I do, so I'm not really asking any action now or any further discussion, just for the staff and the board to start thinking. So maybe me, you and Matt are, can sit down and talk about.
Okay, yeah, that's good, cuz I wasn't quite ready for the policy to be approved yet, um, it hasn't had council's review or. Um, I also thought that A T would be very beneficial to review it. Um, where I got the, the draft uh, template was C I S, which is, you know, our pre-loss carrier. Um, and it would fall under personnel policies. Um, so if, if you'd like it in a different department, we can.
No, 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 I don't, I'm not challenging that, I'm just, I'm just curious, cuz this is all new to us.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering, I wanna make sure we get it right. You know, the legal is at H R, you know, that was, oh, and then talk about maybe one of the counties are doing, probably done that. So, but like I said, you know, I've, I've been using it for two years now, I just, I find it really useful, in business, you know. It does all kinds of things, and it's not going away, there'll be more and more, and then uh, the uh. Broadband started using it to do their minutes and so forth, so. That's kinda where I'd like to leave this, just maybe you and Matt sit down and talk about. Uh, you know, how, what's available out there? What A I oppositions are out there? And uh, we'll just help our workforce be more efficient, because it does make you more efficient.
Yeah, it can be great, it's a great tool, um. Yeah, I mean, I think people are using, some people are using it, more people are gonna start using it, so I think our role is just making sure that. We're using it responsibly.
Yeah.
Um, legally and ethically uh, for the county.
I totally agree, and I, the other thing that I think too is, I suspect maybe some people are using it already.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I think the draft is a good place to start, and it seemed like this is what the general format should be. So, yeah, as we continue, it seems like we're on a good spot to start with.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just, just for uh. Uh, announcements, I ran it through A I.
And did it say it was too strict?
Too strict, no?
No, I said I was just making a joke, cuz A I is saying too strict.
I gave it to Valerie, you can look at it now, but I didn't, like I said, didn't wanna get into the. You know, trying to work it all out now, or tell you that, I'm glad you did it, brought it to us, and I want you to be involved with it, and I appreciate your work. But it is kinda curious, when you, you know, to do something like that and see what, see what A I does, yeah, anyway. Okay, thanks, Lindsay.
You're welcome.
Alright.
Our design teams. Available to. Kelly and Austin. Um, can you raise your hands and I'll un, unmute you and. And then you'll be allowed to start your video as well.
The react heart.
You're muted now, if you wanted to start your video as well, if that's possible.
Uh. That work, I don't know if that's letting me. Can I share my screen?
A uh. Yes, you can. Oh, just a, um, you can share your screen and start video now.
Oh, okay. There it goes, okay. Can you see that okay?
Uh, it's actually behind you.
I'm moving it.
Do you see the site plan?
Yeah, right now, we're just trying to see they can move the orientation, it is shared correctly, we can't see.
Oh, great.
But I'm just trying to see if they can move it. Yeah.
Alright, Kelly, we can see it.
Great, okay, um, yeah, so just giving a little update on the Morrow County Courthouse project in Hepner on the fairground site. And when we last saw you, um, we were kicking off what we called the schematic design process. So we had a pre-designed package that we shared with you and a cost estimate associated with that. And we used that information to set a target budget for the project. And that budget is um, driving what our square footage target for the building is. So you'll see, we've been working on how to make the space needs fit within the. Uh, target square footage, and we've been working on also parking needs too. And fitting that on the site, and then we've been working with the city of Hepner. With their land use requirements to get a few variances. And also get approval to build in what's normally zoned for a residential neighborhood to build this type of building. And it, and it's an allowable use, so we got that earlier this week approval, they call it conditional use. To build a courthouse on this site, and we also had our variances approved. So with that, we can proceed with designing um, a parking area that. Doesn't necessarily need the required amount of curbs and islands in the parking area. And our goal with that was to be able to have the parking lot function um, for. Events where larger vehicles may need to come in and park in irregular uh, layouts. Like the rodeo, um, so I wanted to share the site plan that. We presented at the conditional use, and I added some markups on top of it, just to go over some key features. About the site, just to bring you up to speed on where we're at with things that are, things that are kind of influx in the design still. Or set in the design still, or in the design, um. This, the orientation of this, if, if you're trying to figure out what you're looking at, um, north is to the left. So usually we have north up when we're looking at it, like in Google Earth and stuff. Um, so the high point of the site, if you're familiar with it, it kind of slopes. The high point is over on the left, and the low point in the creek is over on the far right. Um, and you enter the sites from multiple locations. The south entry off the bridge would be where the public enters. And the north entry off Aiken would be where staff enters. And that's the high point of the site where the staff enters, and with the slope of the sites, you'll see um. That the staff entry is actually, excuse me, on level two of the building. And the public entry from the south is able to be on level one, and so both level one and two, it's kinda like a daylight basement kind of concept. Of being able to enter the building, um. And so then the, the red zone is a secure area for the staff and Sallyport. Um, and then the, the green zone shows where um. We've, we're providing a buffer, because this is still in a neighborhood with residential. Homes, and we would like to make sure that the neighbors don't feel like this. Large commercial building moved in and is too close to them, so we're showing an eight-foot wide minimum buffer. On the sides that face or that are but residences, and that would be. Um, if I go to the next slide. Something sort of like this here with a security fence and then landscape screening there. Um, this, the first image I was gonna take you to is where this blue line is, it's a section cut. Through the site, so we're able to look at the building from the south, so that's this view here. Showing sort of the massing of the building as well. So from the south side, you would see it as a two-story building, we're using gable roofs to fit um. The context of the neighborhood, and we have two. The building kinda separated into two masses, you can see here, one we're calling court, one we're calling supports, because the one with the court would have. The Justice Court on the first floor, and the Circuit Court on the second floor. And then the building on the right would have all of the offices and support spaces and district attorney and that, and then. The space in the center would be for stairs and other building support systems. Um. And then I have another section too to help explain the daylight basement, so this. This line cutting through here shows how you're oriented for this view here, so you can see how the entrance. From the staff up on level two and entrance for the public down on level one. Um. The way it's oriented, we're hoping just setting it a little bit into the ground helps minimize the size of the building, we did get a variance. For building height, but it's just actually slightly bigger than what code allows for this area. Um. And we think it's oriented also to um give people who are visiting this building the best views too. Most of the public spaces will look to the south and look to the east. Um and we'll keep a tight buffer and minimize windows to neighborhood. Um. Backyards. So this is the rough concept. Um where we're at right now is we're working through the schematic design phase, and that will be wrapping up quick, pretty quickly here. And our goal is to um get narratives from all of our engineers about the different systems that'll go into this building and have a have two cost estimates done this time. Last time, we just had one cost estimate done by an independent cost estimator. And this time we'll have a cost estimate by our same independent cost estimator plus the contractor who will be who's been awarded the project would do a cost estimate as well. And with those two cost estimates, we would then go through something called reconciliation. And reconciliation would be us trying to um make sure they align their cost estimates. So we they kind of agree on what it ultimately would be. And so once we have the reconciled cost estimate, um we'll update our schematic design package as necessary and come back and present that to you. And we're targeting April sixteenth, that Board of Commissioners meeting to come and present the final package. And hopefully, if everything at that meeting um aligns with our previous target goals and no targets has moved, we would hope for approval to move into the next phase of design, which is called design development, where we um look more into the technical details of the building and start to actually pull like product cut sheets and and start to develop the details of how the building assemblies go together and construction-type detail. So that was all I was gonna share about that. If there's any questions from anyone, Austin and I are happy to take them.
Questions?
Uh no. Okay. Uh sure, just a few points on schedule. Um as far as as things go, um as far as the funding, we have submitted the information to uh for the bonds that they've requested. Uh we do have some uh other deliverables, including the uh ma- master funding uh agreement, which we're still finalizing on. Uh we anticipate that being the next board meeting for approval. Uh that needs to be submitted by the end of uh March to the state for to get that all taken care of. Um we would, I would putting putting the expectation on DLR and our design group to have some um renderings and possible images of the new courthouse available at the fair in August. And so the public can start engaging and and understanding what's gonna be out there. Um instructions start will likely not be until about this time next year with an anticipated um completion of uh second quarter in twenty twenty seven, about fourteen months build time. And so still a little ways off on it, but um we're making progress and and so hopefully we can uh see some movement later on in the year.
But. I don't think she mentioned the trip to the planning commission. On it, do you want to give it up?
She she made just a just about the conditional use plan.
Yeah.
Uh we did go to uh Hepner's planning commission and uh did receive unanimous approval on that. Uh all all voted at support of both the conditional use uh plan and the variances. The variances were for the height of the building um and some other considerations there, but uh Kelly and Austin were there in person and uh myself. Uh one of our commissioners were there, but they've not been enrolled of county commissioner. Uh he sits on the planning commission. Advised a possible conflict, but not a real one.
Proceed.
Yeah, proceed. Thank you. And but by and large, the uh planning commission asked good questions, but passed everything in support. So we appreciate their uh city Hepner support. And we should be able to go to. And important to note that uh two of the neighbors were present um. And they both uh uh are in support of the project. We will have continuing discussions with them as we finalize plans on the the buffering and and some other items there. And um so uh some good track compared on how it was received last year this time. And so we're we're going forward. So. Um that's that's the update on the courthouse. Uh as you can see, the action item on on here is um in related to amending the contract for DLR Group. As we went through and uh received several delays, one of the things that DLR Group and our uh design team was uh trying to be very upfront with the commission was uh expenses because the delays. Um the amendment um is an increase, represents an increase in in costs um which which is directly related to DLR Group and their engineering consultants that have been uh used as we have reviewed uh different sites and actually started doing work on different sites. And it's pretty much lost design time or extended design time that was that was used during that time. Uh this increases, and I just want to pull it up because I don't have it right in front of me. Um this represents an increase of um nine hundred thousand dollars um. Get right back to it. But DLR Group has provided the uh the information uh showing the details of the of their expenses that have been accrued over the last uh fourteen months as we've extended and and reviewed different items um and locations for the courthouse. Um Alliance has reviewed this, has given approval and uh say that these charges are justified. Of course, this far exceeds my authority to uh to sign for this. Uh this increase is calculated into the thirty-five million dollar budget that we're looking for. And so we're asking for approval by the uh Board of Commissioners for an amendment to increase the design fee to nine hundred forty-one thousand nine oh four dollars for a total of three million forty-nine thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars.
You make that motion?
Uh I will because that this is captured by the thirty-five million total project costs discussed previously. So uh with that, uh I move to approve an amendment to DLR Group's contract, increasing the amount to three million forty-nine thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and authorizing commission chair to sign the document.
One second. Then move to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion clear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're very, no, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, bye.
Appreciate it. Good. Next up would be discussion on the relocation to the Oregon Idaho State border. Greater Idaho. Valerie, do we have your map? Do we have their general?
Yeah, he's on.
Okay, um he's raised his hand. I will allow him to unmute. And Matt, if you'd like to start your video, you can do that as well.
Oh, uh before we start, Justin, could you give your regular spiel and
Yes.
Well, why we're doing it?
Background, this is a uh you have to do this several times a year. More is an update. It was a measure that passed through or run into the uh citizens of Morrow County who approved it, where it's a discussion where we're required to have a discussion just on the relocation of the border that aspect and um no required action taken, but really it's the idea of the citizens saying, hey, we want this on a constant basis, not expiration date, keeps on going for now. Um and so that's the idea. A lot of times we get updates from the group that's proponents of this and where they are during the session. But really, that's the only requirement. It's supposed to be talked about. Some counties will just open it, discuss ones themselves and close it. Morrow County is always offered to proponents saying, well, they they want to push forth. They have updates, so we should probably get updates from them about what's going on. That's kind of background.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. So with that, uh who do we have online to on the Zoom today?
Uh Matt McCall?
Oh, Matt, yeah. Matt is usually here. So Matt, can you can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Okay, could you? Yeah, could you introduce yourself and your title and then uh get a little short report on what's happening? Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you, commissioners. My name's Matt McCall. I'm the executive director for the Greater Idaho Movement. I don't live in Morrow County. I actually live in Troup County down here in Powell Butte. Um but we try to have a representative come to all these meetings across eastern Oregon just to uh be able to give commissioners an update as well as as the people in your county. And then also uh to be a resource, answer questions if people have questions for us. So I will try to give you just a real quick overview of where we're at with the movement. We've now had thirteen counties in eastern Oregon that have passed greater Idaho measures similar to the ones that that the citizens of Morrow County passed. Um about ten of those have have required meetings in this way. Three of those were straight-up advisory questions, asking citizens if they wanted to join Idaho. Again, we've passed thirteen in eastern Oregon um to date. So the the process for moving the border, and I know we've talked about this before, is that any two states that are bordering can move their state border as long as the two legislatures agree to move that border. So to that end, in two thousand twenty-three, the state of Idaho uh passed a measure in the House inviting the Oregon legislature to begin border talks. So the state of Idaho um has seen what adding eastern Oregon counties would mean for Idaho. They're open to the idea. They're ready to have this discussion. They've passed legislation um to to begin that process. The governor, Governor Little, has publicly supported border talks and and polling in Idaho shows very strong support for the idea. So the state of Idaho is ready to have this conversation that the people of eastern Oregon are having the two states to have. On the Oregon side of things, we have bills in the Oregon legislature. So we had a bill in the Oregon legislature in two thousand twenty-three that mirrored the Idaho bill that would have um allowed the Oregon legislature to begin talks with the state of Idaho. That bill was never given a hearing, never moved into committee uh in two thousand twenty-three. Into in this session currently, we now have two bills. We have a bill on the Senate side, which is a memorial similar to the bill in two thousand twenty-three that would uh invite the state of Idaho to begin border talks. On the House side, we have a bill HB thirty-four eighty-eight, which would create a task force uh to study all things about moving the border. So that was introduced by Representative Owens and co-sponsored by several representatives in eastern Oregon. Um Representative Levy, Breece Iverson. It was not co-sponsored by Representative Smith. Um and and on the Senate side, our our sponsor is Diane Lintecum. Um Senator Nash has not signed on there. So where we're at, the people of eastern Oregon have spoken, people of eastern Oregon have said they want to have this conversation. They want their elected leaders to have this conversation. State of Idaho is a willing partner. State of Oregon, it has currently not acted, though our representatives in eastern Oregon have introduced bills. So these two bills are sitting in the Oregon legislature. They've both been assigned to their respective rules committees uh in their chambers. Um they've not been given hearings or work sessions yet. That's what we're pushing for is to uh get these bills, a hearing, get them into a work session that the people of eastern Oregon can be heard and and we can help advocate for what the people out here are asking for. So that that's kind of the overview where we're at, what we're asking counties to do. You know, we have been asking counties for uh since this started that once your citizens have passed a measure that you would then help bring that forward, advocate that forward to legislators. There's not a lot for the counties. Counties can't change the border, but counties can advocate for 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 their citizens and for what their citizens want. So we've had nine of our counties in eastern Oregon have written letters to their respective legislators and the governor, asking the legislature to take this up on behalf of their citizens. Morrow County has not done that yet, I don't believe. Um that would be an action that that the county court could take that would help advocate for people. Um same with the Eastern Oregon Counties Association. It it even though a majority of the members uh of the county association, the OCA's uh citizens have voted for our measures as a organization, they haven't put out a support letter yet, asking legislators to take it up. But that's something that you could do, could advocate for. I will now step back, but I'm more than happy to answer questions. And and if people in the audience have questions, um you can assign them to me if if you like, and and I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, uh any questions about?
Uh yeah, I've got one. Uh so uh this is Commissioner Peterson, haven't had a chance to meet you yet. Um that House bill that you uh referenced on, you know, what it would would take to move the border, is there anything uh of the sort where it would be, what would all of the consequences be? So all of our zoning laws would change. All of our governing laws for how we do things as a county would change. Is there anything on the table for um having a task force to study that? I would be extremely interested in if we were going to continue this discussion, let's let's play it out. What would it actually look like? Not just you know, moving the border, what do all the pieces look like?
Yeah, absolutely. And nice to meet you, Commissioner. That is what this bill is intended to do. It's a it's a task force and and you know, I I would uh encourage people to go read HB thirty-four eighty-eight. It's it's a task force that brings various groups together. So so all of the, you know, stakeholders, as some people call them, it 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 lists out all the different people that we would want to be part of a task force to look at all these sorts of issues. What happens to the existing laws? And how do we grandfather things in? What happens to transfer of assets and and prisons that are in eastern Oregon that serve western Oregon? All of those big questions that are very difficult for a county to answer or an individual you know, person to find answers to. That's what this task force is is designed to do. The legislature has the ability to create task force and appropriate dollars to study these things, and that's what this task force would would be intended to do.
Any other questions, Matt?
No, that was my big one. Thank you.
Okay, uh um. In the past, uh we we don't really have an open forum for public, you know, back and forth with you, but you could state some kind of email or website or something where
Yep.
someone has questions, they could follow up.
Absolutely. So the best way to contact us is through our website, greateridaho.org. There's a contact button on there. Um and people can submit whatever questions they have. We'll get it to the right person.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh it is, uh next up is the wildlife hazard map area designation concerns. And that's me and I'll just give you a little background. I received a letter from Dale Boyd, and I have heard other concerns from people about the wildlife hazard uh map. And Dale wrote a really good letter here and sent it to me. I asked him if he would come and speak because I think it's good uh to someone who is directly involved with this. So Dale's here, if you kind of come up and give us a little rundown on what his concerns are and what he would like to see the board of commissioners.
Thank you. Like Dave said, I I got ahold of him to uh bring this up as a topic. Um. I'm not sure Morrow County and the citizens were actually involved all that much and getting aware of this problem. Um I know you you said September twenty-four. You had a a meeting, but it looked like the mayor of Mabbett just had a briefing paper.
Yeah, I looked it up when we talked. I don't remember the exact date, but
I don't think ODS actually came here and explained what towns is gonna affect people. Um what I've seen is I have a neighbor, his home insurance has tripled. I have another person, his home insurance is doubled. I know a person in Penland Lake, they they got their insurance canceled on their cabin. Um so what if their, one of their processes was this was not gonna affect the insurance rates by doing this hazard map? Obviously, it has. I've been turned down by two companies looking for insurance for auto and home. And I just, um there's a big a big uh push to get this repealed. You know, I was just requesting the board send a letter to state senators and and representatives, ask them for a repeal of this map and Senate Bill seven sixty-two. Senate Bill eighty also directs penalty for anybody in a high fire hazard zone. If they do not mitigate their defensible space and do not do home hardening. And it's also gonna affect new construction projects for houses within these welfare areas that have been designated by the state. I think the analysis um is flawed. My thirty years in fire management for service, I cannot see where they take twenty-one years of fire experience and make a whole analysis out of it. You have to take years and years and years. Um. So I think the analysis is flawed. It's just a, it's a bad deal on these repeals.
Okay, um. Justin?
Yes.
Uh. Would what 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 would be the process? I kind of put in there a little suggestive motion that ran the letter that I'm gonna map repealed. What what would be the proper way to get some legislation like this changed? Just the map, repeal the whole thing? I'm gonna try to get the wording down.
Oh.
I'll propose a motion. I'm not sure if we'll get acceptance on it, but that we do write a letter asking if this is a repeal. What would be a good motion? I mean, you see what I'm saying?
See, Pearson, right now, and I think this is being discussed some legislature, but I don't know the exact bill number. I think it's probably in the documents, but just a motion. Well, our part is normally there would be, you know, a letter from the board prior to the legislature or a representative senator saying Morrow County believes this bill or law should be repealed. It's not fair for whatever reason, it's just like synopsis, and then trying to push legislature to, or directing our representative senator to have to overturn that, to remove that requirement. And we can draft that, then usually it gets brought back, and then the board approves and saying, yeah, here's the language we like this. We all agree with this language. I think it's approved and sent. That's the process. I'm not sure we have to have a motion right now to say it's going to be drafted. The issue might be if we say we want to write a letter, motion to write a letter, to have it approved. Difficult part is, what happens if the letter's drafted? And then one commissioner says, oh, I don't like this section.
Well, what I thought you could do on that, except dark side. Well, then that could be, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
No, yeah, no, I didn't want to do that. But well, when I was thinking about this, is the timing now. You're a representative. When the legislative session is over in June, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we have time.
We have, we have some time. Yes. My suggestion, I am absolutely in favor of opposing the wildfire risk maps. They're absurd. I have done some, I'm digging myself and trying to find out what the county could do. And I wish we could do more, but I feel like a letter is honestly really, it's our best place to start. I think we could, we could say we, as a board, move to have the chair write a letter in opposition to the wildfire risk map and supporting the appeal of it. And then we could have a letter where we then do another, you know, special Zoom meeting, and we review the letter, and we take, you know, the ten minutes to say, hey, I really like this language. I, you know, can we switch this sentence up? And I feel like that would be appropriate.
Do you think that's a special meeting is necessary? That's why I brought up the timeline of the session. If it's not over till June, you have a meeting on March nineteenth.
We probably could wait till March nineteenth.
Yeah. My question also to you is, have you heard anything from AOC? Or would this be something, I mean, I don't know if it'd be a, you know, if a total county would get behind this. But, you know, or what is it, the Eastern Oregon Association?
The Eastern Oregon, yeah, I mean.
Aren't we a member of that?
Yes, we are. Pretty much everybody is opposed to the wildfire risk map. Like, there's nobody who is a proponent of it as it currently exists. The real question and the fight that's going to be played out is, is how far are we going to go as a state? You know, are we just going to repeal it entirely? Are we going to take out parts? That's where the discussion is being had.
That's what I asked Justin. So have you attended or been in contact with the Eastern Oregon group?
I have been in contact with them some, but I will do more follow-up on the wildfire risk stuff. I have been less involved the past two weeks than I was previously.
No, I know. Yeah, no.
So.
When you're under two o'clock, hold on, you know, you could be thinking about it.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
Today, and that's not a funny joke. Would you be willing to contact, I'm not even sure what their structure is anymore, and ask him if there's any group effort going on on this, and we might also tag on to?
Absolutely. I would be very happy to do that.
Okay, now who should write this letter? Justin, should this be you, since we went to college right across from the state capital?
Yeah, if we need to, I can help draft something for it too. Yeah.
Okay.
For the nineteenth.
For the nineteenth.
Yes.
Make sure we get the, it goes to the right people.
Correct. And what I probably, yeah, I'll work on that and then have drafts earlier on, see if there's comments or anything else, and we'll work on it. Wait, you have some ground workers to be on the nineteenth to work on that, Tom.
So, yeah, I would do it for it too.
See, they probably did a lot better off the city.
No, truthfully, you know, we were talking about AI. This is something that I would use in business to seek to, because, you know, I don't know how many people know how it's worked. Well, some of them are different than others. But like ChatGPT, it gets the entire internet, you know, green pages, I think. And it looks at all the other similar requests. And we'll draft, you know, you might get some idea, but I'm not telling you to do it.
I'm just looking at it as a good idea. No, it's a good idea.
Put a plug in for, you know, for county, you know, staff and so forth, to start taking a look at this, because this is an ideal thing that, you know, that's used in this kind of thing. Okay.
Anyway, yeah, so I'll work on that, and that earlier an option for people to look at for that letter. So absolutely.
For the nineteenth.
Yeah, the only thing, one comment for this aspect is that, for those who probably got received notice, there is an appeal process that landowners are doing, and that's, and I think they're going on the seventh, so.
March tenth.
March, uh, March tenth, okay. And so I was wrong, so March tenth. So individual landowners want to make the appeal, just recommendation. They submit that also, and it ties the land.
And yeah, to really emphasize that, AOC and the folks that I've talked to about wildfire maps, please pursue that, that personal appeal. Because right now, it's the best shot that you've got. We can't guarantee that any other way is going to work. So please try that route, and then we're going to do what we can to inform the state that we, as accounting on the whole, are not in favor of this, but cover your bases.
And Sannings raised their hand.
It just raised their hand, okay.
What was that, someone?
Tamara, you're unmuted.
Oh, Tamara, you, yes. And oh, just as a quick aside on how we, people making comments. Normally, we don't have it open for everybody to just have a freewheeling thing. But when we have principals, we've got principals who are directly involved, such as Tamara, then we want their input. So that's kind of why we do it sometimes and discourage it other times. So Tamara, go ahead, go for it.
You bet. Thanks. So Stephen and I are principals today. And Stephen is, thank you for that. Stephen is our GIS map person, and he's followed this pretty closely. We can make available that September memo that we shared with the board. It's really not a function of the planning department. It will be an extra regulatory role of the building official, which we contract with the city of Boardman to do. We haven't received a whole lot of feedback, but we were concerned as staff when this came down, and you recall there was legislation. So the Department of Forestry withdrew it, pulled it back, had a bunch of public meetings, and then reissued this other set of maps. So we went a little above and beyond. And in addition to that September memo, had a, Stephen designed a little flyer that was published in the Gazette.
I think this was about four weeks straight.
Yeah, several weeks, bringing this to people's attention. I'm only sharing this with you because we wanted to get the word out, because our hands are tied. There's, you know, with staff, there's not a lot we can do. I, we will, Commissioner Peterson, send you a little bit of additional background material that we have that might help you in your capacity. We can send that to you also, Justin, if you want. So we've got the technical report, the FAQ about the contested case to appeal your individual property. Anyway, I sort of just wanted to say, I feel like we've done what we can do as the planning staff. So you're exactly right. The next step is really more of a political move by the board.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that with us. We appreciate it. Thank you for your work on it. Okay, is there any other questions or, do you have any questions with Dale?
Uh, no, but thank you for.
Appreciate coming.
Effort.
Yeah.
Okay, so we guess, I hope we guess, next week we should have something ready for the letter. Okay. All right, thanks. All righty. This stuff is, uh, assisted fire annexation. And Justin's going to explain. Why is this?
Absolutely, Tom. Our commissioners' information, this first start was a county had questions before about annexation. You have a process we've done in the past. I think you'll see, we've been on the commission for a while, who have followed the board commissioners. I think it's been Hepner's done it a few times, Hepner Rural Fire Protection District. Boardman has also, basically you have landowners. We determine, well, I'm not in a fire district, I've seen this happen recently in Blake's Ranch. We need our place, you know, protected. We understand those are the costs, of course, we'll have it. The assessors' office will put additional cost on us, but we need that protection. Probably even assist for some of the insurance that we were just talking about. Wildfire, hey, you know, I do have protection here is the fire department here that's protecting it. The landowner will then usually reach out, talk to the fire, the local fire department that they want to work with, in this case, it would be Hepner, here at Blake's Ranch. And then that landowner will file petition for the commissioners, saying, I want to be included in this special district, special district being this fire department here. And the board commissioners, once they receive that petition from the landowner, and generally approval also from that fire district, will hold a public hearing and determine under the statute, and this is a statute we generally call it ORS one ninety-eight point eight five seven. Annexation without election by petition of the landlord. That's the process we've gone through. Hold a public hearing, and then the board determines if it's passed or not, or they approve. Generally, they get approved because the idea being landowners in favor, fire departments in favor, it's added. We've done that again several times through the process. Recently, this came up again, another petition was received. So you're going through the process, and during that time, another fire district had indicated, well, there's another statute that applies. It is a new one passed in two thousand twenty-three. Just for your information, that's ORS four seventy-eight point seven zero two. And when I went back, did some time looking at the history of that process, that really, that idea was the idea that we don't want, it's termed freeloaders. Folks that are within seven road miles on a fire station that's in a district that are not included in it. And that they might get the benefit, the fire district fire. At least a lot of comments on that legislation, which legislation came from fire districts who said, we have a hard time. All of a sudden, we get an emergency call, hey, there's a fire on Jimmy's farm or Jimmy's residence. We don't stop and look, okay, hold on, where's Jimmy's house at? Oh, okay, he's not in it. Oh, but the house next to it is, do we go and just protect that house? What do we do with Jimmy's residence here? He's not in our district. And that just doesn't work for emergency situations. That was the idea, at least what I got from the legislation. And they determined, okay, well, this is a process for these fire districts. It's related pretty much to fire within seven road miles to try to bring those facilities in. Say, okay, you're this island out here, we can't have that. We are going to now include you in the district. And there's a set process about it, usually set notifications to the landowner, to their fire districts that might be within that response radius also. And then also the process of, it doesn't mean instantly that you're being taxed, but the idea is, once you receive that notice, if there's certain land use actions, say placing a property, then you can be forced into the fire district. Again, this came up when we did receive a petition. I will note that recently, that petition was rescinded by the landlord. So we received a written petition for this, we're looking into it, and we had some conflicting information, conflicting information, but we were trying to balance, hey, here's the statute we normally use, it still applies. Here's one specific to fire, which one takes priority, which one applies here? But that has changed now, when the landlord has now rescinded that petition. Why that being rescinded, the board doesn't have to consider it. So we're not, couldn't even consider that a public hearing. This was never scheduled today for a public hearing, that's still required. This was always saying, just going to get a conversation about annexations. And so that's kind of the background a little bit, they are still confusing. So I'll say, not confused, it's a little bit the fact, the example here, let's pretend there's property that has, what is within seven miles? It just talks about the statute, talks about seven road miles. The idea being, how do you get access? Doesn't matter how the birds fly, because that's not what a fire truck does. It goes on roads and the access. And so on this property and on the ORS four seventy-eight seven two, the new statute, the county is not generally involved, right? That's a key thing. The petition process from landowner petition, the landlord works with the fire district, says, hey, we want to be added in. The board of commissioners does have to approve that. You would have to hold a public hearing. That's what we do, that's required. The four seventy-eight, the new statute, doesn't require the county's approval generally. That is more between the fire district and the notification to other districts and the landowner, and they work that out. But the county does sadly get involved. That's one of those tough situations when this comes up, is that even though it'd be easy to say, oh, we're not, we don't have a say, we're not involved. We are, because what happens is, if there's land use action, then either the planning department or the landlord is supposed to notify the county. And that's supposed, and the county is supposed to then notify the fire district, saying, hey, something happened on this property, we're notifying you. And then the fire, the district can notify the assessors' office, say, add this to the rolls, the tax rolls. That's concerning in my part, where I think the county does, then in those situations, have to review the underlying aspect and say, okay, we're applying a tax on this person now, based on a notification, not a set order from a quarter or anything else. And do we determine, oh, is this seven miles road miles? What do we consider that? And so I don't have a set answer on those yet, because we've been working on this just recently, just looking at some of these. We're not at the point where the county has to take action, where we haven't received any notification to add it into the tax rolls. But we're aware that this is going to be an issue that comes up. And so that's why I want to mention is that it'd be great to be able to say, hey, we're not dealing with this, but I know when we get to a point where there's requests from a fire district that says, hey, we followed all these steps, and actually taken on this property, it is now at the point, we've been notified of it, and we're now asking the assessors' office to add this to the tax rolls, as stated in the statute, that the county has to say, do we agree that we can, this is a tax rolls? That's a tough balance. And so that's more the background of saying, again, all this information is more that what we've done in the past, there's a new process also. So you will still see, I believe, you know, property owners in Blake's Ranch going through with this petition for landowner, landlord petition. Because a lot of these things are not within seven road miles. I mean, we are not clackamas, Washington, Oklahoma counties, right? This is, while these are outside that seven miles of a fire station for these properties. So we'll still generally see these petitions, landlord petitions, but to be aware that the new statute for seventy-eight seven oh two is being used by fire districts in our county. And that we'll have to look at that when they do ask for certain properties to be added to the rolls. It's simple when notice goes out saying, hey, we believe you are this island out here. You know, you were within our seven road miles, we want to, we're going to add you to our coverage area. And the landlord says, yeah, that sounds good, I agree. I do, I realized I wasn't protected. Because the idea being, if you aren't protected and they go out, go to your property, you can get taxed on the statute, charged in the statute three times the cost, I believe. And so there might be a benefit where they say, we want to be part of it. But, and that's simple when they, when they say yes. The hard part is when, one, there's a disagreement between two fire districts. Statute doesn't say, oh, who decides? A lot of times we're used to saying, used to saying, oh, we disagree with this. Who's going to decide? Board of commissioners, does a court decide? No, the statute just says which one is closer.
And it's not the decision.
What's that?
Does that not the decision, then, whoever's closer?
It is, but then what, then the hard part is, how do you disagree with the assessment? So an example being here, if you say, well, we're closer, because we'll use this access. Then the fire district says, but that's not a road. You can't, that, how does that count? It's not a roadway, you can't go across a field. And you're like, no, that's an interesting point. What is seven miles on road? And that's the issue I think that will come up. It's, the statutes are very easy to create. They don't think about all these weird nuances. You think about a property that has road access, you think about single homes that has a road that goes to the house. I don't think you generally consider a, you know, thousand acre parcel, two thousand acre parcel, and say, oh, yeah, well, I always enter my field from this access point on the southeast corner of the property. And you say, oh, well, then the northwest corner is accessed, that's within seven miles. And you might say, well, yeah, we have no road there, we never access it from that direction. That's where the statute is not clear on it. Or if you have to go across someone else's property. And is that, is that owner of the property not a government entity or Oregon person? Is it a federal government property? You don't have control. You know, a lot of times you can say as an emergency person, saying, hey, we're going to cross this. You know, this, I know this might be private property of a citizen, but for emergency going across. Those rules are different when it's federal property. We have dealt with that at times when there's been a fire on a federal property. You know, how do we handle that? When we have weeds on federal property, do we get to say, yo, you control your weeds or else? And they say, no, we're the federal government, we're not going to have to do what you tell us to do. Do we get to say, you know, you control your weeds or else? And they say, no, the federal government, they're not going to have to do what you tell us to do. So those are the strange nuances that when they created this bill, no one thought about. But I think is an issue that we would have to consider if it gets to that point where a person says, hey, add us to the tax rolls. Uh, we're within seven miles, and the question like, well, how are you within seven road miles? What is this access? And then if it's outside the seven, does this even apply as a fact, as a way to it? So there are, it is still a little nuances, but I want to bring that attention up. To, we'll talk about it more when it comes to that point, but that's just kind of the background I want to give, that is not as straightforward. Again, it used to be more straightforward, and we just had the one process we generally do, and this did just change in two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions, Justin?
Not have a lot of questions, but they're for people who wrote the bill, not Justin.
And definitely, again, you can see this bill made perfect sense when you look at the fire districts that submitted testimony. And they talk about these small parcels. Oh, we have this area, this one of these people right here just didn't want to join in, and so confusing to us, not this idea of this thousand acre parcels. Um, that wasn't a factor.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Uh, not even a shared report.
Okay. Um, I just had a few items to bring up. There was a, there was a late item that came in, um and that we did need to uh take action on, and I asked uh Vincent and Greg to come. This is a request for a property use license by Oregon State University for an ATB Safety Youth Writer and endorsement class. Um, Greg and Vincent, would you mind coming up? And while they're coming up, Ray, I, I have something for you in my office, so if you stick around, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, look. Good stuff. Oh, thanks, look, I thought maybe. And so Lindsay left her seat. It's okay. Good morning.
Morning.
I have not met you yet. Really, I'm very close. Um, General Manager of Mark Eddie Parks.
Pleasure to meet you.
Okay. Um, this is, you will be good, or you want to start, Ben?
No, you can start. I mean, what time you want.
Okay. Um, this is a proper use, um agreement with uh Oregon State University. It's, it's an ongoing renewal every, every year we do. Um, we teach classes up there uh for the youth. Uh, Oregon State, uh State of Oregon says anybody under the age of sixteen has to have a hands-on training before they can write any public plans. Um, so, uh back in two thousand seven, right, I was actually part of helping putting this together. There was, there was there's about five of us that actually went back to this and helped with this together. Um, it's a class that we teach. Um, so that they, they meet requirements for State of Oregon. We have two, um actual training sites at U H B Park that, that we use. Um, we have probably, I think I counted seven instructors. Uh, they're volunteer instructors. Um, they don't get paid to do this. So, and that's what uh keeps our kids coming back and, and everybody that needs these um cards, be able to write on, on public grounds. So that's, since it is an Oregon State University, we have to have a land use agreement because they are the sponsors, they are um the people put on overseed classes.
Alright, I think it's great.
And that's, that's what we do, and we'll be doing this every year. And I have a copy of last year's with me. It's word for word pretty much, except for change the dates.
Um, just for my curiosity, how many uh kids do you get participating in?
It changes from year to year. When we first started, it was, we were doing three to four classes with ten fifty and maxed out all the time. Um, now that, that we've kind of caught up, it's like everything else we've caught up with, uh, and we get them from, from Washington. Um, but like I said, we don't charge, they go through, through Oregon State University. Um and that is more money to stay here because they're out of state. Uh, but we average probably at least three to four classes a month. You know, every, we schedule for Saturdays. I mean, and usually one of the deputies that is, is up there takes care of that. If not, then, then um, one of us will pull in and do that, one of our, our personnel.
Cool.
Right. Okay, any other questions?
No, I think it's great.
Um, I'll entertain a bunch of good people for the profit use license, the Oregon State University, while there is a condition chair to sign about.
I really meant it.
You are Dale second, you're second in for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next up would be the strategic plan.
Okay. Um, the strategic plan, just wanted to bring it up with the board commissioners. We kind of put it on hold for a few, a little bit with uh the change of uh, uh elected officials and such. We are ramping that back up. We're contacting people that have been uh and volunteered and been appointed for the committee to make sure they're still secured, and I should have a fully outlined plan on meetings and such uh at the next VOC meeting. I'm wondering whether we'll be reaching out to stakeholder groups and having open houses later this summer uh to, to have that engagement. Uh, so we're looking forward to getting that, getting a vision and, and priorities set up in that way for the strategic plan today. Uh, the legislative report, um, there's two items that we're looking at. Uh, one was just come up from uh AOC, and that's Senate Bill nine sixteen. Um, this is a touchy one because it would allow, um, or it would require municipalities to play unemployment insurance for public employees while they were on strike against that organization. And so this is something that's uh being watched. There's actually some testimony going on this afternoon, and I'll be tuning in on and seeing what direction that's going. This is starting in the Senate, so if it proceeds with some support, we'll be looking to um, to help multiply and try to get things done. That would have a uh significant cost because right now it's on the uh it's on the shoulders of the employee if they, and if they decide to strike, and the union has uh parameters to help out on that. Uh, and if we conclude the strike, then we actually I'm sorry. On video? No, it wasn't, darn. We, we pay back those costs anyways. So for us to uh, to pay them for theirs, it's, it's a really interesting uh i- item, so we're keeping an eye on that. Um, and then the SIP ports bill, the HB twenty-seven twenty-five that we're looking at, we're keeping an eye on. Uh, that's, uh, they did have some action on it, but that was only to move it from the Transportation Committee, the Joint Committee on Transportation, the House Committee on, on Revenue. Um, so we haven't seen any change or any amendments submitted, it's just been moved to a different committee. We'll be keeping an eye on that. I do need to reach out to um to Commissioner Schaefer of Yumitala County to see what he's, um, he's read on that, he's expressed very, uh he's very interested in this bill and does not appreciate the changes that are proposed. And he is the president of the AOC this year, and so we need to follow, I need to follow up with him to get things taken care of on it. Uh, other items, just to let you know, um past two weeks, we went to the um County College. Um, Commissioner Peterson missed it for very justified reasons. Um, and then um Valerie and I were able to attend a great session, good training. Um, we, I was able to go and Ju- uh Justin as DA and uh attended a tour of Jefferson County Circuit Courthouse, which was built about eight years ago. It's got some really good pointers to uh on space use and, and that, that we pulled into dark, into ours, some lessons learned, kind of ideas. Uh, we spoke about the conditional use permit for the courthouse, that's been approved. And we're working on the uh Clean Water Consortium. The um the, we did receive letters of support for uh, for the Congressional, um designated spending, um the CDS for uh a phase three of the look on, on clean water projects, which would be specifically for the county. We are also able to get uh letters of support from both the uh county as well as the C W C for different uh other organizations that were doing uh CDS monies. Uh, we're, I've
The governor.
What's that? Governor actually wrote a letter for our phase three, which was pretty cool. Um, she doesn't usually come out and do that, she allows different agencies to do it. And so she uh threw her support behind our phase three. And we actually have a meeting with uh with staff from Senator Merkley uh tomorrow afternoon. We just got that today. Um, and, and saying, hey, we'd like to talk a little bit more about your phase three. So hopefully that's a good indicator for additional funds coming in to help with the nitrate water issues. And hopefully, well, phase three would definitely be projects rather than stakes, and so that's a good thing. Um, the other thing is, is just to keep you apprised of Clean Water Consortium, uh Chair Sykes and I went uh as representatives from the C W C to uh City of Boardman um presented there and uh just gave them an update, seemed to be received well. Uh, I've met with the legal counsel for C W C, getting her up to speed. And um we are working on the finance bylaws and a few other items before our next meeting in April. So just getting that organized and taken care of. We have received the sign once, Justin has been helping us with getting organizational items together, and he's gonna be getting that on record with the Secretary of State, so that we can be official and get our own tax E I N numbers and all that other fun stuff. So we're working hard on those.
And my attention, the City of Boardman appointed a representative to the advisory, uh Mike.
They did, Mike Lees?
Yeah. So, and that was unanimous votes.
Yeah. So we're, uh, we are planning to meet with uh City of Oregon, I believe in their equal meeting. And so we'll keep working on that. We're also meeting with the B C E A next Thursday at their morning meeting, so. Um, so we're working on this, appreciate the kind of support on that. And um hopefully we get a lot of projects. I'll put myself out of business and you'll have to hire a full-time person to run that, so. That's my goal, actually.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, so, uh, that's, that's um all for my report uh today, unless there's any questions from the commissioners.
Not for me.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Matt. Okay, correspondence, I didn't see here. Commissioner reports, um, Josh, you got anything to report?
I didn't have anything to report, no.
Okay, um, the only thing I would say is, I just been been all this. There's no dating, let's chat, cool, I'm on the order there. It was shattering. I did get a email, and you might have got this too, and Chris, about the wildfire presumably.
I don't believe that I did, unless it was very recent.
Well, said commissioners.
Overlooked me.
Anyway, this is, I'd like to host a Zoom call with you tomorrow. Today was just to discuss wildfires in our district, wildfires affect any of your penalties. Uh, please feel free to send this invite to anyone I may have missed that you feel should be part of this group discussion, and I'm excited to meet with you all in the Senate Commissioners. So I assumed he sent it to all of them, and I knew, I, so I told him, I said, well, we can't both go, because it would be warm, we can't do that. So my question is, I have a little difficulty with it this afternoon. I don't know, you know, I, I think he's talking about Matt, isn't it? Don't you think it's the mitigation or the uh renumeration for the fires? Do you think that's what he's talking about? It wasn't very deep talk.
Yeah.
Did you get that in your mind?
I did not.
Could I forward that to you? Would you like?
I, I would like to, when, when is it tomorrow?
It's tomorrow, it's today.
Oh, it's today?
Yeah, you know, I, I said tomorrow, it's three five.
Okay.
I'll forward you this email to both you and Matt, if that's something you would uh
Yes, given the discussions you've had today, yes.
Because I'm gonna have difficulty, and I want to I think we really need somebody there, and I think that's what he's talking about. I don't think he's talking about the wildfire, man.
Probably use it in terms of thing, the map, I would thought he would use it that, he's the idea, the map of it, so.
Yeah.
I was gonna be on the safe side of that, somewhere there, he knows.
Because uh you are Matt, you probably know more about this. Remember, they, they were talking about a payment to counties that had damages, right? That was a state, right?
Yes, I had.
Did, did that ever go anywhere? I told a couple ranchers about it, you know, and I said I'd keep them up on it, but I never heard about any forms or online applications through.
We haven't seen any yet, so.
Alright, now for this.
And will, will you be able to attend then?
I can't, but, but, well, we could both anyway, that's what I told him, so that's why I was glad when when Justin, he would be able to.
I can do that.
Because I think both of them.
And I should be able to attend too, if it's the three, so.
Okay.
Cool. Then two of you guys.
Awesome, so yeah, if you could, you did, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, that's not gonna be the consortium. Do you have anything else to report, so? Okay, next we're good. I'm gonna call a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
And then we're going to go into executive session, but I'll read that when we get back. Right now, we're in five minutes recess.
Are muted on this, everyone, or not?
Unmuted.
Okay, we're, we're ready? Okay, we're back into open session. And now we will be going into executive session under ORS one nine two dash six six zero two H, which allows the Commission to meet in execs, executive session, to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body in regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. And there will make the note that uh there is a potential decision or action as a result of the executive session. So with that, I will call this executive session.
And all this get the, and the attorneys.
Hmm.
Uh, Mark, Nicky?
Right.
You can see her call. Anybody else?
Uh, yes, he said it was a Sierra Collet.
Okay.
Did you pronounce that wrong? Hopefully they're listed.
Um, Mr. Eubert? Any members of the press?
Interested?
It's hard not seeing the nameless.
Yeah, um.
I don't see anybody press related.
You have to go there and pick them all in the waiting room?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody in the waiting room should be, and, but even the should be.
And I have.
Okay, we're coming out of the executive session and back into open session. And there will be no action taken by the uh Board of Commissioners. So any other business to come before the board today? Okay, we'll follow me in adjournments. Thank you.